First item that we have on our agenda this evening is the prayer. And Ms. Glenda Morrison-Fair, if you will please lead us in the prayer.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, welcome. We come to give thanks and appreciation for a great and productive year. In just a few days, we will watch the classes of 2023 Celebrated Milestone. Your Word has shown us boundaries and guidance. Therefore, we have given our children our love, our guidance, our direction, and our support. God, we ask that you give this class an unlimited abundance of your grace so that they make a positive impact in this world. Finally, bind our hearts and minds together as we commit to do all things well. We know that your desire is for good. Let us respond with joy and obedience, and we simply say thank you. Amen.
All right, we welcome William Fan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. William is an outstanding eighth grade student at Berea Middle School, who has made the principal honor roll each and every quarter in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. He has currently taken high school level algebra and English classes. William was recognized by Upstate Parent Magazine as being a highly successful student who contributes positively to his school and community. His principal and teachers describe him as well spoken, inquisitive, responsible, creative, and works to advocate for himself and his peers. Next year, William will attend Berea High School. After graduation, he aspires to attend an Ivy League university such as Harvard, Yale, or Princeton, followed by graduate school. Although he still has plenty of time to decide what career to pursue, we are certain that his future will be exciting and bright. And am I to also understand that you go to school every day wearing a coat and tie?
Yes, ma'am.
That is quite awesome. That is quite awesome. That is awesome. William is joined tonight by his mother, who we, Ann Tran, and his principal, Brianna Falvey. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much, William. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. How are y'all?
Good.
That's good. It's always fun to watch middle schoolers move places, right? Don't relax. Okay, we do it for a living, Mr. Ray. Very, very appreciative of y'all having us here tonight. We're only here to, we just want to show off our students to you. We think we have some pretty, pretty awesome students. We're going to like some selections from you tonight. We are, we've gone a lot of places and done a lot of things this year. We played in Columbia. Any Gamecock fans? Todd Royster? No?
It's always been garbage.
One point was all it took to bring me back. It's funny, Mr. Ray, they put your name first because I think I'm going to be fired tomorrow. But we have, we played in Columbia. We played here in the upstate. Most recently, we played back in Simpsonville, which is where we're from, at Hillcrest Middle. We also went to Florida. So we're going to play two of our selections from you. Mr. Ray's going to do the first one. This is called Above the Worlds by a gentleman named Rob Bryce. It's pretty. Close your eyes and enjoy. Before we play, I'd like to say thank you, you all, for having us. The board, thank you for having us. It is very refreshing. This is the only place I've ever worked in Greenville County. And I always tell people, it's a great place to work. It's a supportive place to work. It's just the arts are thriving. I mean, we very much appreciate it. And if you don't like anything you've heard tonight, send all complaints to B Wingate at.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. That was a fabulous performance. Again, The Wildcat Wins Hillcrest Middle School. Jason Ray and Christian Scott. Thank you for brightening our evening and starting off our meeting with such wonderful music. The next thing on our agenda is the adoption of the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, when I move to the adoption consent calendar?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. To add to the consent calendar, I'd like to introduce the following individuals new to administrative appointments or appointed to a new administrative role. I'd begin with the newly appointed assistant principals. Ask them to stand so that we might recognize them and welcome them, congratulate them on their new appointment. First, Conalita Kuratin, new assistant principal, Fountain Inn Elementary School. Conalita, do you have family with you for the evening tonight? Congratulations. Welcome to your new role. We'll thank your husband for being with us as well. Gavin Fisher, newly appointed assistant principal, Southside High School. Congratulations on your appointment. Welcome to Southside. Do you have anyone with you tonight? All right, sir. Brandon Addy, assistant principal, Ralph Chandler Middle School. Brandon, congratulations. Welcome to your new role. Do you have anyone here with you tonight? Thank you very much. We're glad to have your husband with us as well. Sierra McGriff, assistant principal, Lake Forest Elementary School. Sierra, congratulations. Do you have anyone with you? We'll welcome him as well. Angela Pitts, Northwest Crescent CDC. Angela, congratulations on your new appointment. Do you have someone with you as well? Thank you, and welcome to your mom as well. Lastly is AP appointment, Misty Abercrombie, Southside High School. Congratulations on your appointment. Do you have someone here with you? Congratulations and thank you, and welcome to your dad. Interim principal, Child Development Center's April Roberts. April, congratulations. We look forward to you assuming that leadership role. Do you have someone here with you tonight? And welcome to him as well. Thank you for being with us. Now, the principal appointments. Sheila Gentry, newly appointed principal, Washington Center. Good, congratulations. We're glad to have you here with us tonight. Do you have someone with you? Well, Emma Hogan with you. Okay. Welcome to your new assignment. We look forward to having you in a leadership role. Lakeisha Cook, newly appointed principal, Paris Elementary. Lakeisha, congratulations. You have anyone with you tonight? Very good. Appreciate her being here as well. Congratulations on your new appointment. We look forward to your leadership at Paris. Our remaining principal appointment, Rudolph Gordon K. Eight, and that is Dr. Meredith Welch. Meredith, congratulations. Welcome to your new leadership role. We look forward to you fulfilling that position, Rudolph Gordon. Do you have someone with you as well? Thank you, and we appreciate your husband being here as well. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Thank you, Dr. Royster, and welcome. All right, the next item is the appearance of visitors. And I'm going to have, Dr. Stiles is going to read us our policy concerning that.
Thank you. As each speaker's name is called, he or she should proceed to the podium at the end of the board deus, where there is a microphone and light system. Each speaker has up to three minutes to speak to the board. The light system will be green for the first two minutes and will turn yellow when one minute remains on the speaker's allotted time. In keeping with board policy KCA, abusive language or personal attacks aimed at students or staff members will not be permitted. All speakers are expected to behave in an orderly and respectful manner. The board will not engage in discussion with the speaker or respond to comments. The superintendent will designate a member of the staff to respond to each speaker in an appropriate and timely manner.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. The first person on our list for tonight is Brady Coker.
So I'm, I am Scott Powell with Craig Alden Davis Architecture, Brady Coker with Harper General Contractors, and Hootie Salisbury also with Harper General Contractors. And we came tonight to congratulate the Greenville County School Board. As an architect who designs lots of schools, I travel around the state. And I don't think most people understand the quality of the facilities that we have here. They're very functional, well maintained, and often inspirational. And so we submitted Fountain Inn High School. We were the design and construction team for Fountain Inn High School. We submitted it and won an award with the Association for Learning Environments, which whose sole purpose is to create spaces that inspire children to learn. Mr. Sailors happens to be the international president-elect of that. So it's a wonderful organization. This is the second highest award, so it's a great accomplishment. And Craig Alden Davis and Harper General Contractors just appreciate you for trusting us and doing this wonderful project.
We also submitted Fountain Inn High School to E N R, which is a national publication. It recognizes, it got recognized as an award of merit for the K through 12 education project in the southeast. So that's a very big honor. And just on behalf of Harper General Contractors, just want to say thank you for allowing us to build your schools.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all did a great job.
All right. Thank you very much. The next person is Vanessa Leverett.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Leverett, and I'm here on behalf of my granddaughter. Her name is Kennedy Sowers. She attends Robert E. Cashin, and her teacher is Ms. Wims. She's five K. We had an incident on the playground where her and another child were trying to go on the slide, and he felt like he controlled the slide and wouldn't let her slide. So he pushed her, and she hit him. He pushed her again and ended up kicking her in the mouth and in her stomach. I wouldn't have been so upset if I had got a note from the teacher, and I was informed of this. I received no note. When we called the teacher, they had no idea that anything happened, didn't know who the child was or anything. So you can imagine, I'm pretty upset. I have a doctor bill to show how upset I am. I would like to have some information, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leverett. Our next speaker is Terrell Brown.
All right, let's give you a little summary about the 2023, 2022-23 school year. It had its ups and downs, but most importantly, things we did, we took the bitter with the sweet, and we moved on with a lot of things that we could not change. We had a financial literacy workshop on this past Saturday. It did really well, and I don't think those in the, I want to thank those in the community. And I'll thank those in the, I want to thank those in the community who participated in this seminar. The reason mine, I think the district probably needs to do something similar to this. Why? Because we have a lot of young teachers who don't know anything about credit, how to budget, knowing the stages of buying a house, and also about financial planning for the future. And that's the toughest thing that I think feeling coming in, because a lot of new teachers have already reached out to me. And the first thing they ask me is, when can I get a second job? It's kind of tough for them to know that, that they can't, this is one of the problems that they're having, buying a house or possibly being forced paying high rent, because every year rent does not go down, it goes up. That's something that I think you all probably need to look into. If not, I'm going to do it. Why? Because many people in this area, nonprofits, always try to make sure they assist if they see something that can benefit educators. So we're going to do, see what we can do, but we're going to try to focus on that. The community as a whole has been very influential, a lot of the things that we've had in the project with the GCA. We've done a lot of different projects that have been very much successful, and I can't thank the community enough for supporting us, as well as the school board members who attend some of our events. I really, 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 really appreciate that. Another thing for the community, the community, one thing you need to be proud of is our schools. And I think over the last year and a half, I don't think people have really reflected that. And they need to take pride and heat on the stress level that we all go through as educators and as administrators, because we go through a lot. And the main thing that we're seeing now is that we're facing a lot of issues where people are getting burnt out, not just the teachers anymore, but even administrators. It's kind of not a good issue when you have your leader leaving or not feeling they can do their impact on the job. So, community, please, I know if you're listening, please take heed and also making sure that you're trying to support our teachers, support our administrators, because it takes a lot to deal and run with a lot of things going on in 2022-23. The last thing I want to say is, I want to take the time to give out the thanks for those who've already supported some of the issues and some of the events and some of the things that I have. One of the biggest supporters that I have are some of my friends who are ex-military and also fraternity brothers. The reason being because the goal for this year in 2022, they always said that when it came time for them to answer that call of going to defend this country, they took the initiative to do it. So when it comes to advocacy, I shouldn't have to back down. Thank you for everything you're doing. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker is Michael Joy.
Hi, everyone. Couple months ago, I came and I talked about teachers are heroes, so I wanted to follow up on that, because I too am one of those people that speaks up about the things that I don't like either. And I guess I wanted to make sure that there's a distinction, right? That people that seek a career to be teachers are heroes, right? That truly want to give and watch the joy of a child grow, you know? And every aha moment that they get is an inspiration to the teachers. And I know that and I feel that, and I know that there's a lot of people here that get that and feel that. When I do have concerns, it's often, I think, founded in the systems, the politics, the people that may put their agenda in front of God's plan for our children. And that's where I come from, and I wanted to make sure that that distinction is there. I know that a lot of you may feel like you're running in mud up to your hips or whatever in the systems that exist. And I think a lot more people know that and maybe don't acknowledge it as best as we can. But that exists, and I wanted to share that. As one person's opinion, I figure I'm just average, so I think a lot of people feel it. The other thing I wanted to mention, and it's just an idea, but if you think of the stewardship of all the land that is in Greenville School District, and what if we planted a few apple trees in there? Would any child know hunger? Can we eliminate that? You know, just plant a few seeds, watch them grow, maybe learn a little agriculture and how to make them grow better, right? Prune them, et cetera. I think there's some teaching in there. But we have a lot of land, right? And planting that in some of the areas could help, so just a thought. Hope it catches fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joy. That concludes our speakers portion for this evening. Dr. Royster.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. As often is the case when we close out a school year, we begin to think about the coming year, and kind of like New Year's Eve on a calendar year, we like to look back, I think, and reflect upon accomplishments. Now, what I wish I could share with you tonight are all the accomplishments during this school year. But you all already know that we don't find out what those are, for the most part, until the beginning of next school year. But I felt like I did want to take just a moment to share some of the things that we shared during the course of this year, very briefly, kind of the high points of where we are. And we certainly anticipate in the coming year that we would exceed these marks. We talked about this just a little bit in the budget the other day. There are really few places you can go and find any national comparison of school districts. One place that a lot of families use and businesses use when they're considering moving to a community is the Niche.com, which literally gives grades to school districts all over the country. Greenville County Schools has a grade of A-, it's based on student achievement, it's based on communication, based on feedback from individuals in the community. There are a number of factors. You can go online and look at it. They rate, I think about 12,000-plus school districts in the country, though there are about 14,000 out there. Our grade of A-, there are only 23% of districts in South Carolina that have an A, A-, or an A+. Only 16% of districts in the United States have an A+, A-, or A-.. Now, 32% of the 50 largest, of which we're one of the 50 largest, have a grade of A-, A-, or A+. If you're looking for a point of comparison nationwide, as many people do when they're considering moving to a community, it's a place where you can see how we reasonably compare with other school districts in the country. You know our students in '22, we have every reason to believe this number will increase for '23. They earned a potential of 25,050 college credit hours, which has a value of $10.5 million based on the cost average per credit hour at the South Carolina Public Four-Year Universities. That's a saving, direct savings to our families of $10.5 million. Those courses cost them nothing to take, no tuition. Our students earned $8,745 industry-recognized credentials, helping to ensure them that they're either ready to go directly to work in a job that pays well above the minimum wage, or to take the next steps towards additional credentials and certifications, or a two-year degree, or in some cases, to a four-year degree. Our students last year were offered $183 million in scholarships. That has steadily increased in the last 17 to 18 years, 20 million more than the previous year. We have every reason to believe that we will be reporting a higher number in the coming year. All of which goes to our goal to ensure that we're building a better graduate, that our students leave us with a high school diploma, they leave us with college credit or industry certification, or both of those. So they truly can present to a college, to an employer, or to anyone else, evidence, not of their potential, but of their actual work. And I think it's just a good time, as we draw a close to this year, and we begin all those preparations for next year, that we reflect a little bit on the significant successes that have only been achievable through the hard work of our employees, the willingness of our students to take advantage of the opportunities presented to them, and the support through funding and policy framework of this board. And thank you very much for your part in this, and we look forward next year to being able to share an increased or elevated listing of accomplishments. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. That was a wonderful glimpse into what has happened this past year, and definitely great news on our investment, our return on investment. Our next item is the action items, the acceptance of the audit team. First item is the acceptance of the Audit Team Committee. It comes from the committee of the whole, is to accept the names of Amanda Brett, Jeff Cochrane, Michelle Goodwin-Callwell, Glenda Morrison-Fair, and Chuck Sailors to serve on the Audit Team Committee for the 2023-2024 year. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, committee members. All right, the next item is the J.E. Serene Scholarship Award Recipients. The recommended motion is, do I hear, do I hear? Yes, Dr. Stiles.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the new and renewal scholars for Serene Scholarships in the amounts specified in the Serene Scholarship Program Report.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Our next item is the social media multi-district litigation. Mr. Sailors.
I'd like to move that this item be deferred to a call meeting to be held at our Cal meeting immediately after our Cal meeting, two weeks from now.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? Have a motion and a couple of seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, committee liaison reports. Mr. Sailors, do you have a report from the advocacy committee?
Yes, Madam Chairman, nothing of substance to report, other than the fact that we met earlier today and reviewed with Ms. Horton's guidance of the vast amount of legislation that's going on in Columbia. Julie does a great job at keeping us up to speed on what's appropriate, what's not appropriate for us to chase, and also to keep us informed with all of the actions that are taking place in Columbia. The budget process is still in discussion, which we covered during that meeting as well. Also, to Mr. Stanfield and Mr. Webb for helping us with some additional information related to our ongoing conversation related to impact fees. And that report will be oncoming toward the end of the calendar year, closer to the end of the beginning of the school year, to assemble a recommendation that we can discuss among ourselves and then, if appropriate, take forward to the county for their consideration. So it was a very informative time together, but there is no action at this time being recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Sailors. Any other committee? All right, our last item on the agenda is the finance report.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. I don't think we have any item of particular note, Ms. Stack, but certainly we answer any questions that the board might have. We know that you will be spending considerable amount of time around the subject of finance between now and June the 5th. As a reminder, public hearing at 6:00 on the 5th, and second reading of the budget at 6:30.
Any questions? Seeing none. All right. Mr. Sailors.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Have a motion and a second. Is, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We stand adjourned. Have a nice evening.